They're here for Christmas or something.
Good evening, you all. Thank you guys for joining, joining us and joining the Department of Equity Diversity Inclusion and convening with me. Before we get started, I just want to turn it over to the board vice chair.
Thank you, Malcolm. I just wanted to welcome everybody back. I know it's been a long time and I'm glad to see you guys dedicated here to the work that we do. Hope I'm speaking loud enough. I've been told to speak louder. So I'm happy that Malcolm is here. I've had a chance to meet with him. We, him and I and Caress were in the, the New Hanover County, oh, we went to the New Hanover County, is it on? Oh, thank you. New Hanover County Equity Summit Thursday and Friday. It was very, very good. I recommend next year that anyone that wants to attend, it should. And so I am happy to turn it over to Malcolm to introduce himself. We're happy to hear.
Thank you so much. Alright, you guys. So before we get started with the agenda, just a little bit about myself. My name is Malcolm Johnson. I'm born and raised in Wilmington, Carolina. My foundation was laid at Mary Washington Howe Forest Hills, Williston and I live at Earlton College High School. I continue my education in North Carolina Public Education at UNC Greensboro where I have an undergrad degree in Political Science. All of my professional experience has been at Washington DC where I have a master's in curriculum development and instruction. Areas of research have been Aces Average Childhood Experiences, Restore Justice, Multicultural Education, and culturally relevant teaching and pedagogical practices. I'm so excited for the opportunity.
Someone who's listening says your mic is not on.
Sorry about that. My guys on, my folks online. Good evening to you all online. I'm sorry that you guys couldn't hear me. But just to reiterate, born and raised in Wilmington, Carolina. Went to school UNC Greensboro, degree in Political Science, Masters in Education Curriculum Development Instruction. And I couldn't wait to get the opportunity to come back and serve the community that gave me this opportunity. So with that being said, we have some time at the end for just any type of questions that you guys have, so please talk to me. I'm looking forward to, forward to the opportunity to truly engage you all as we really get started with this work. So the first thing on the agenda, we have a student voice update. Policy for student voice has gone for its first reading. All cabinet members and board members have their input submitted and they are just preparing for their second reading. As you guys know, Dr. Casey Smith, her last day was September 7th. Phenomenal chance connecting with her over her last few weeks. She's really shared all, her hard drive with me. She's really poured into me and she's really just spoke about the mission and vision of EDI work here. So rest assured, I'm in constant communication with her as we go forth on this journey. Next, we have is also, when it comes to student voices, our on-campus or our campus point of contact in lieu of Ms., of Dr. Smith would be Mrs. Harper. She's your school level point of contact. All other needs, even if you can't get in contact with her, please reach out to me directly because I will serve as that primary contact if you can't get right to Ms. Harper. Alright, so next thing I want to do.
Before you move on, I just would like to share with the group that I know one of the points of the policy that the students brought before the board had the superintendent maintain an advisory committee and he has done that for the past two years with students. We are set to resume that committee this year in October. The juniors who served on that committee last year will move up as seniors this year. We will also be taking recommendations from those students on new juniors to bring into that group as well as reaching out to counselors and principals at the school level to get new members, new members as well. Take, looking at some of the students who work with Dr. Smith and Ms. Harper on the student voice, we will also be reaching out to those students and seeing if they would like a seat on Dr. Faust's advisory committee as well. That way we can ensure that those students who have done that, laid that groundwork and that foundation for all of that work are still included in being heard in the student voice aspect and getting them going. So I just wanted to share that with everyone as well.
What about the, the students that are? What about the, I'm sorry, Ms. Walker. The, what about the students that are on the equity teams that are being led by Ms. Nobles and Mr. Jones? Are they included in that?
I can't speak to those, but I do believe that those will continue and like school levels have student equity advisors and those advisors will be continuing working with those and working with both Ms. Nobles and Mr. Jones to continue those school-based equity groups. But if we would like to reach out to them and then have them come present and give us an update on their level, I'd rather them speak to, to what they're doing because I'm not as involved with those. So I don't want to misspeak on any of their initiatives and what's going on on that level.
Thank you.
Mr. McManus?
How many schools have an active EDI committee?
Student or adult?
Student.
I believe, as I heard last year, there were, all middle and high schools had a student-led equity club team or some sort of advisory, maybe safer one was lacking and I can't remember which one that was.
How about school adult committee, staff?
Staff committees, I cannot speak to that, but I can reach out to the schools and see and get that number for us for next time and email that out to everyone. But if I wanted to throw out a guess, I would say over half of our schools probably have some form of equity staff work group or leading it, doing some form of equity bookwork, book studies or some form of work. Anyone, Lena is our only other school representative could talk a little bit more about if they, if you know of anything happening at Forest Hills or your particular schools regarding that.
For elementary, it's not really happened much. I know middle school is pushing hard to get it implemented. From my previous experience at Gregory, I know that was established and it's been running. I don't know what the status is this year, but they've been, and that I heard over middle schools and high schools for elementary.
Is there a framework that is developed for school-based equity work groups?
I believe that, again, I don't want to speak to this because I'm not in the schools. So my, my position is more from the top district level. So I would rather we have school members here and I know Tyler said he was unable to attend to kind of talk about what's going on. But I do know Mr. Johnson is going to be talking about his framework coming up is on the agenda. So we can kind of talk and listen to him during that part.
I would like to go ahead and just say, talking about student voice, the board is very excited. We've watched what the, the students have done with this policy. We're excited to implement it and I know our chair here, we've, has added it to the agenda. So it's going to be a regular monthly student voice update so we can be a conduit with the students. They can raise concerns or whatever, but there's a space for them at our meetings. So I just wanted to say out loud and I, and I want to thank Dr. Smith and Ms. Harper for all the hard work they have done. I know I texted with Dr. Smith today. She's, she's very, it's hard for her to let go because she's worked so hard on this. But she is definitely paying attention and really hopes that we can get this policy done by the next meeting so we can start implementing, you know, some of the things. And we're happy to have Malcolm here as the point person for the students.
And what I did share with Ms. Harper is I, I want them here as well too. You know, anytime, anytime we talk about equity diversity inclusion, you know, part of what their, their goal is to be a voice at a table. So even at these meetings, you know, I would love not just to have an update, but have them come and be in conversation because as we get through the agenda, you guys will see where their voice may be useful, especially when just understanding our path forward. But before we push forward, anyone else have anything you would like to offer up or are we good to go?
Go to Board of Education.
Alright, so just moving on to defining equity, diversity and inclusion. It's really important for me stepping into this role that we're all operating from one framework of definitions. Equity, diversity, inclusion is defined so many different ways and is interpreted so many different ways. So when we're moving and we're planning and we're programming, I just want to share with, with you guys the three definitions, the office is operating from so we can just be on the same page. Alright, so how New Hanover County Schools Equity Diversity Inclusion Office is defining equity as the pursuit of creating educational environments that consider the experiences of all students and staff in instruction, professional development and policies and procedures. Diversity, the representation of all varied identities and differences, race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, origin, visible, invisible disabilities, learning styles, linguistics, et cetera, collectively and as an individual. Inclusion, establishing a culture of belonging by actively inviting the contributions and participation of all educational stakeholders, not limited to students, families, educated staff, administrative leadership. All students and staff can be equally valued, treated with respect and provided with fair learning and development opportunities. Any thoughts? Questions?
I have some thoughts on, it's the culture of belonging and we had a, gosh, it was, it was, it was a Think Inclusive webcast and Think Inclusive is like central to, like they focus on disability rights advocacy. And it talked about like the three things that you needed to, to do to get that culture of belonging. Because it's pretty like, everybody wants it, right? But it's pretty elusive sometimes. And, and it actually, from what they've studied in both schools and organizations, creating a culture of belonging is, they called it the three Rs, but it's essentially the, like, does everybody, is everybody bought into the common mission, right? Does everybody want to go that same direction? And, and I think that's important to, to have across all levels of an organization. Because if it's only the working level, it's not going to be, be able to be sustainable. And if it's only leadership and it doesn't flow down through the working level and that shared vision, you know, it's just, it, it doesn't, it doesn't work on the ground in any organization. And so that was one of them. And then the other two Rs were, were just like mutual respect. There was one that was like, you, you respect the organization and the organization, and the organization respects and values you. And so I forget what the mission, how that they turned that into an R, but the other one is just mutual respect essentially. And so that's, I mean, it really like what, what your definition of inclusion is because it talks specifically about treating everybody with respect, no matter who they are, where they come from. And then just that shared, like, it goes both ways, that they, they feel that value and then they kind of see the value that their, you know, teachers or managers, if you're talking about an organization can bring. So I just, I really like that you, you talked about belonging specifically and that includes that equal value and respect. Because that's, that's like how to create it and it's often like, it often can be intimidating because it's such a soft thing. But that's kind of how you can boil it down to actually getting there.
Thank you. And the goal with these definitions is when you go to our website and you click on EDI, this is what you see. You know, anybody who's curious about the work that we're doing, I want them to be greeted first with how are we defining equity diversity inclusion?
I wonder if there's an opportunity to create some tools based on the definitions so that decision makers in the district, administrators, board members, teachers could say, alright, let's look at this through our equity lens. And does the decision we're about to make support our definition of equity? The same thing with diversity and inclusion.
Thank you.
The, along those same lines, I was just thinking about, because when, when I was trying to list, I'm making notes to myself and writing along. I didn't realize it was up there, but it's long. So you know how we have put at all of our schools now, the, the charts that show our strategic plan and all the pillars? You know, perhaps we can do something like that as well, like, you know, a side-by-side thing? Because equity, diversity, inclusion is one of our pillars, but it's, it intertwines and interweaves in like everything we do. So it shouldn't necessarily be pulled out to be separate, you know? But that's just what I was, you know, thinking. So that might be something that your group, you know, that this committee works on. I was just, yeah, I'm just inviting myself, but that would be something that would be very visual.
That is definitely something I could take back to the communications division and we can create some templates and get some posters printed that we can share with schools as well to get up in their halls. It would also be, I don't know exactly what our procedures are for how we, I know the strategic plan is like a working document, but I would very much like to see these definitions worked into the strategic plan because I feel like that it lacks those definitions of how we move forward. And since we, everything we do as a district moves back to, are we following our strategic plan? I'd like to see this information edited and entered into the strategic plan to make sure it's kind of ingrained in our vision and how the district moves forward.
And it might already be. Yeah, I haven't.
And then that's a good point because bringing up strategic plan is obviously what we want to follow because they include steps in them that are, that show intentionality on what we want to do as a district. And they are finite steps and it is a living document. And I think that if the definitions aren't there, they should be there and, and maybe we should have regular updates on it. And that's why I'm glad Malcolm's here because he will be the point person for us when we need updates on certain things that we're working on. And, you know, this committee has hung in for a really long time. All you guys that are here that really want to do this work, but are always, you know, wanting to know what can we do? Give us the tools. Let's figure out how we can make these things happen. And that's what this board committee is hoping we can work with Malcolm on to do. You know, I, I don't know exactly what it looks like yet because you're here. You're going to decide how we, you know, really structurally want to move forward. Dr. Smith did last time, Dr. LaShawn Smith, but I imagine that we're going to talk about that.
Which is why I appreciate Caress for bringing it up because that's the first thing we discuss once we receive the strategic plan because equity is mentioned 88 times without a definition. You know, and if there is a definition, you have to search and parse through the paper to kind of tease it out. So it is important for us that almost Roman numeral three, terms and definitions. And that's for all the things that, all the words that may seem complicated, that often gets misinterpreted or have varying nuances, that we just lay those out and just know this is the sole framework that we're operating from. So thank you guys for all your.
So if board members, if you could tell me or you could talk as a board at the next meeting on how we move forward without making edits to the strategic plan and the edits being just entering these definitions into it so they're fair.
So to that point, if you can talk with Dr. Faust, because that would be something that you guys or, and Malcolm could have, you know, a space on the agenda, that would be something that you would bring to us and we, for information or that this is what your, your plan is because it's, it's all of our strategic plan. But you guys run it and we just, you know, make sure that you do it. So yeah, I would say you guys own that and I mean, that's.
Do we know who adds to the document? Do we know who's?
Dr. Faust. I mean, he, well, actually Josh, you know, is the person who is the.
I edit the document, but I, I don't want to put any edits on it first without like the proper procedures.
Right. And so I would just say that you guys bring those edits or suggestions, you know, Malcolm, you're in charge. So yeah, you, you bring it to us and then let us just know that you're doing that.
Can I ask a question? When we start looking at, and I'm just, just based on just various things that come sometimes hit you in the face. When we start adding, so we're looking at instruction, professional development, and somebody please tell me if I'm wrong, and policy and procedures, is there any way to add facilities and communication somewhere in that definition of equity?
That's a good idea.
You said add facilities and communication?
Add communication.
And inclusion?
You can add in every key element in it. I'm just looking at the equitable part where you have the pursuit of creating educational environments that consider the experiences of all students and staff and instruction.
I see what you mean.
Professional development and policy and procedures, like community, communication and facilities is not included. Or so we're looking at every element. So just like all of the, whether it's coming with HR or, you know, like sometimes you need a long definition to make sure all the key points are. Especially when we start looking, okay, where are the issues? What is that? Whether it's a human resource issue, whether it's a, you know, just hiring practices or just kind of, sometimes we need more. And that's what, just based on what we know is facing, I mean, facing.
And can you tell me her name?
Kamika Sibery.
Ms. Kamika Sibery, thank you so much. Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I worked for New Hanover County Schools. I am now, I work at DC Virgo Preparatory Academy at the UNCW Lab School. I'm an educator. I was a student in New Hanover County Schools, just like yourself. However, I went down the street in Greensboro on East Market Street. At that wonderful institution called North Carolina N T. But, and my kids went, you know, were educated in New Hanover County School System. And so that is why I am here. I am looking, I was ecstatic about EDI when it came out through the work group. I couldn't join it because I was no longer a part. So when this opportunity came, this is where I came to the committee.
Malcolm, Malcolm, would it be okay following Kamika to go around? Shawn, you want to introduce yourself?
Oh, sure. Yeah, I'm Shawn Lan and I, I work for GE. I don't work for part of the school system, but I work for GE and I'm just a community member and a stakeholder. I've got three little ones in school. They go to Blair, which we love. But yeah, I, I do, my main advocacy is around special education and STEM. You know, just all STEM really, but special education as well.
I am Lena Spinosa. I am assistant principal for Forest Hills Elementary. I'm here since the beginning of the EDI committee, been advocating for communication, for crossing that bridge. I don't know how we're going to fill the gap between our Hispanic communities and the school system. There are a lot of things, most of them related to communication and what we understand how to communicate and what people understand in a very different way that, that we need to solve. So I try to be involved as much as I can to try to fill up that gap and help in any way I can.
Thank you.
Stephanie Cravill, just joining your meeting to hear about the good work you guys are doing.
Kirsten Kynes. I'm a community member and a professor at UNC Chapel Hill and my area of interest is racial, ethnic and economic justice in schools.
I'm Karen Beatty. I'm retired educator. I served in the New Hanover County Schools as a licensed social worker. I also went through the schools here. My daughters went through the schools here. And now my grandkids have come back into Wilmington for a pit stop there in the school system here. And I've always, you know, because of my training and my background, equity, diversity, inclusion, all of those terms are not new to me. They're very familiar and I'm here as a community member and like I said, just believing the dignity and worth of all individuals. And I believe that this committee can help us.
I imagine we have a lot to talk about.
Yeah, you do. Well, you know me, I'm Stephanie Walker. I'm a school board member, but also I grew up here and my kids grew up through the schools here too. I think we've talked about our, our common school. But I'm happy to be here and I'm happy you're here too.
Hugh McManus, I started teaching here before a lot of you were born, 1970. I taught at Chestnut Street School, which is now Snipes. And I taught at Rod Gritz, Royal Grace, as kids call it, Rod Gritz. And long story short, I became a principal, so I have a little over four. And long story short, I became a principal, so I have a little over forty years in the business, Bob Hoggard for nine years, and Topps for nine years, and then I went into private education while I retired from the state. So, I've, I've been in both worlds, public much longer than, than, than private. Um, my wife and my daughter both graduated from New Hanover High School. I met my wife here after I moved here from graduating from school, and, uh, it's just, this is all about the right thing to do.
Yeah.
That's probably why they moved me to Snipes, but I was there during the Wilmington Ten Race Riots, and there aren't many people who taught school or lived here during those times, and I spent two years here. And then I left to go to Raleigh after a year, and then I went by Chapel Hill to get my master's administration. But I had no undergraduates in, that's another old story, in education, totally, I'm a rebel in the sense, I, I, I had no undergraduates in education until I went back to grad school. And so, uh, I look at things a little different than a lot of people. If you're doing, if it's worth doing, then let's do it.
Definitely, with this-
And I don't care who, what's in the way, just do it.
We welcome diverse perspectives and input, that's how we solve the world's most complex problems.
I am Caress Clay, Communication Supervisor, and you know that, we've, um, working really closely since you've come, and I'm glad to see you in the office and work with you and look forward to the work we will be doing in the future. Um, I am the Communication Supervisor, I think I just said that, been with the district for about fifteen, this is my fifteenth year, worked at Ogden Elementary, Hogarth High School, and then, um, now at Central Office. Um, just always been a big proponent for equity and wanted to do more as you, as I saw more inequities across our schools and then in different populations, um, also a member of the LGBTQIA, um, Alphabet Mafia as we like to be called sometimes, and, so I, I bring that lens as well as the lens of a black woman, and I, um, am a Wilmington transplant, been here almost twenty years, so did, like many of us do, go to UNCW and just never leave. And my daughter just started at Cottington this year, but she did C-Rac last year, so been a parent within the system for, this is my second year, and it, it is a very different lens and perspective as a parent and knowing, and I, I kind of get a different feeling knowing, as an employee, knowing how to navigate the system and how to advocate for my child, that I feel not a lot of parents from minority or black, or black and brown populations realize, so I'm just really here to, um, make sure that I can spread that awareness to any population or anyone who's wanting to hear or wanting to know how to best advocate for their child with their teachers, with their principals, and how to communicate to get the results that are best for their kids, because I, I've had situations that occurred just recently, and I thank God that I'm in the school system, that I was able to, to know who to contact, who to go to, who to talk to, how to talk to educators, to get the results that are best for my daughter, and I, I want that for all of our families.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Alright, uh, so we're going to move on to our EDI framework. Um, definitely want to spend some time here, um, the purpose of this is, the EDI framework seeks to provide a guiding light for all teachers, staff, and administrators engaging in the educational and social emotional work needed to improve student outcomes, promote inclusive climate and culture, and build team learning experiences that reach all New Hanover County students. Um, and what we're looking to do here, as I've, today makes sixteen campuses that I've been able to visit, uh, I'm not proud of that, because I kind of got slated, bowed down in two days of training, the Equity Summit on the eighth and ninth, that took away two travel days, uh, to tour schools, um, but one thing I recognize is that equity looks different at every single campus, and that's, it's supposed to, because the demographics are different, the needs are different. However, what I realized is missing is a guiding framework. There's no framework for teachers, points of contact, equity leaders to point back to, say, this is what informs my programming, this informs the initiative, this informs the parent group, you know, there's, you know, when there's backlash, there's no, it's all, you know, each individual school has to take that hit, and, you know, some schools are more prepared than others to maneuver that, and what I feel like the most important aspect of this role right now is establishing that framework, um, so we can truly do the work and it's sustainable, you know, that's a framework regardless of who's in, off of that is in place, and that we continue to push the, um, pushing it forward. Um, so when we're talking about this, I do want to take some mo- take a moment, because as I've been doing my school tours, I hear a lot about equity, we're doing equity groups, and, but this equity group is not a part of this group, and it's really big for me to have organizational, like, sh- I, almost like a, nah, I don't want to say hierarchy chart, but a org chart, you know, with all the groups, with all the committees, and with all the student groups, all the staff groups, that way we can least, we can build, uh, some lateral communication. Um, I think that really serves us best, because first of all, you guys stayed committed for six to eight months without movement, you know, and that's super commendable, and I thank you guys for, and I'm, I mean this from the bottom of my heart, thank you guys for waiting for me. Um, but it should never happen, you should never go through a stall again, you know, for whatever reason, so it's really important just for us to have that in place, and the work we do with equity, diversity, inclusion is hard work, it's emotional work, there's emotional labor that comes with doing this work, especially you guys being community members, you're coming after your regular job, you know, so you had to make arrangements for your children, you know, there takes a lot to come here and be in this room with me, so what I want to thank you for that, and I also want to figure out a way to be sure that this, this time together is as productive as possible. Um, so right now, I don't know what this will look like, um, but I want to know if you guys can just tell me, as many student organizations out of parent organizations, faculty-led organizations, that way I can get a lands- like, a landscape of all the groups that are out there. So, if I can round robin it, um, if you want some time to think and reflect, um, but that's really important before we build a framework, because I don't want people doing the same thing without being in conversation with each other. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Perfect. Um, so with that being said, I'm gonna hold this mic so my, our folks on live stream can still hear us, um, but we can start with anybody, um, and let's focus on, let's start with students. So, the student work groups that we have as of right now, as it relates to equity, diversity, inclusion, would be-
So, we have student equity groups?
Those student equity groups?
That are led by Abby and Brian.
Okay.
Like-
Hold on, yeah.
So, there's Abby and Brian that have a student equity work group at each of their schools, but they're, they are also, like, equity work, student equity work groups at all schools that Abby and Brian don't leave, they're led by different advisors at those schools. And I guess they communicate, those advisors communicate with Abby and Brian.
Okay, so what I would, I'm listing student, student equity group, all schools?
Mm-hmm.
Then there's a student equity group led solely by Brian and Abby, correct? Or is it?
I believe so.
Okay.
So, are you saying that they lead, so let's say, like, we have an SGA, so they will lead, like, the SGA student equity groups, and then each school has a representative that comes to those SGA student equity-
That's what it should be.
What, do you, I mean, but-
No, yeah.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not saying that's what's happening, but is that what is supposed-
That's what we want, that's what we work towards.
Okay, alright.
But then on top of those, it's, certain schools also have, like, a GSA or a, um-
What's a GSA?
Yeah, well, can-
Government-
Gender, sexual, or-
Like a student county-
Gender, equality, alliance.
No, like, um-
Gay straight alliance.
Gay straight alliance.
LGBTQIA groups or pride club.
So, would that be-
Would they call it LGBTQIA?
Those are different groups than their equity groups.
Okay.
So, you see why we're here?
Yeah.
Because it's a lot of work in, and so many people who want to do the work.
And I know Jerel Lewis specifically works with th- those advisors.
So-
So, he may have the names of all of the advisors of those groups at the school level.
Correct. So, it's the student equity group that's at all schools, do we have a point of contact where let's start to get, to reach all those advisors?
You could reach out to Abby and Brian, and they could give you points of contact.
But that's all middle schools, right, and high schools?
All middles and highs, yes.
Okay.
So, that's different than the student voice, though, this is all different than the student voice.
Yes, and that's what's been confusing for me, because-
Because I thought it was just one group, and that was the student-
It's not, there's, there's a lot of little groups, kind of, sometimes they're pulled in, sometimes they're not, so, yeah, there's, it's-
So, as of right now, we have student equity group at all middle and high schools, the student equity group led by Brian and Abby, uh, certain schools have a GSA or Rainbow Alliance Club, uh, the point of contact, contact for the advisors would be, uh, Mr. Lewis, and then we have student voices.
Then we have student voices, which would be Ms. Harper.
Student voices.
And then, uh, I believe there is also a, um, and Sean, is there a, um, SDA student group that has kind of come from the special PTA?
That, that is my understanding, I don't know that it's come from the special education PTA, but I think that my understanding is that most, if not all, of the high schools have some sort of, like, club that helps support, like, kids with-
Unified buddies.
Yeah, yeah, unified, some sort of unified club, and I think it's all high schools, or maybe just three of them, but it's-
All, I think all four traditional high schools have that.
Yeah, I, I think so.
And that's only at the high school?
That's only at the high school level.
But then I know Murray also has the, um, they're like, the, what did Murray Middle School, there's like a banner school for inclusivity with their program with their SDA.
Well, that was through the, um, Special Olympics, and that is through the, um, unified, they don't call it that, it's called like, um-
Yeah.
-unified champions now, but it, but it's through Special Olympics, and Murray has taken their club to a different level-
Yeah.
-than everybody else, but, but all the high schools have that club.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
For the middle and high school groups, who provides oversight so that they're all steering and going in the right, no one? So, it's-
It has to be educated, facilitated.
Well, I think that's why Malcolm's asking.
There's a facilitator.
Well, I know-
So, there would be a teacher or staff member advisor for each-
Or social worker, yeah.
Yes.
But are they all collaborating?
No.
No, and that's what Marcus is trying to, Malcolm, I'm sorry.
Correct.
And as of-
That's for the caress.
Yeah, because-
And that's what that big summit has been, we, we've had two, one at the fall of last year, and one in the spring of that, that all of these groups were invited, but it, the, just to have some common speakers, but they really weren't connected, so I said, oh, yay, we're all connected finally. No, they're, they're still in individuals, so there, there's some silo mending, you know, or Venn diagramming that might need to-
Brian and Abby just led the last one, the last student conference we had, Brian, yeah, so they would def- ask them about that, what they did for that, because they really worked hard to put that together, and it was a success.
And not to single, you know, anybody out, but I know that David Hand at Laney High School is, is usually pretty involved in that, but he, and his wife, Amy Hand, you know, at Ashley, so there are a lot of people, um, and a lot of different people who are leading the efforts at schools, like Judy Martinez was at Laney, you know, part of that group too, but it, each school, like you said, margin, you know, puts it together and manages it according to the people on their staff that want to, you know, that have an interest in it, you know, um, more so than the others. But I would, I would throw out there that even, um, some of our student governments and our student councils, although not an equity group, they are getting a little more active in thinking about their peer groups, um, so that, that's, that's another student group, that, um, groups, and, um, several of our high schools have, um, like, peer mediation, not mediation, um, peer support groups where, where they talk to each other, like, if you don't want to talk to a teacher, um, then they, they've had some special training, um, that they do, you know, so that is, um, David Hand at Laney High School, you know, does a lot of that, so that's another group where kids get some training and, um, and are, are talking with each other and hearing some of those kinds of things. So, that's another, I mean, but that's, again, that is site-specific, uh, other schools might have that, I just am not aware of them.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it's not busy.
So, for student, so for student groups, right now, we have one, two, three, four, five operating programs at all or various different schools. That's a lot of kids invested in the work.
Yeah.
You know, and that's a lot of impact, you know, so just being super attentive about streamlining that, you know, that way we can really do some great work. Um, really quick, yes.
Yep.
No, no, go ahead, I was getting ready to move faculty and staff, so if you have any more students, I can take.
I, it's not a student thing, it's just kind of a reflection, this was incredible to hear from Ms. Cravill, kind of this history of the district, but also, what I'm beginning to wonder is, what's our, our mental model, our kind of assumption about the best way to be equitable in terms of student agency and opportunity across schools? Is it to allow things to bubble up from the schools, to have a framework from the district, which I think you're moving toward, or something in between that allows innovation at each of the schools, but has some sort of organizing support at the district level to ensure, let's say, I, I loved what you said, well, this is when faculty have the time and the interest they can spur something like this. Well, what do we know about schools that are struggling? Their faculty have less time, right? There's more turnover, there's more challenge, so we're, we're likely to see inequities emerge if we allow that to be our operating model of how these clubs arise.
I definitely think it should be something in the middle, but I think, like, identifying these, the, um, kind of silos and groups now is very important in the aspect that make sure that they can get our framework, they get these definitions, these advisors and teachers who are over these groups can hang these items in their room, so they're operating from a central district level of, of common work that we have, and then as we hear of other groups who do, because, I mean, they come from need, if we have students who need that group, that's how those groups come. We didn't have a pride club, because there was no need at some, in some schools at the beginning, but now we have this population, and we have these voices who want to be seen and want to be heard, so the group naturally kind of came to fruition. So, as they do that, again, that's when we step in and we provide them with the framework, and we provide them with the definitions, and we give them the guidance that allows them to do the work, or, in the, in the kind of measure and the, um, way that the district kind of, I don't want to say dictates, but that we have worked on to establish.
Yeah, the district supports.
Yes, thank you.
And I want to say, can I just add, student voice, um, I think is going to help a lot with that too, because if you look at their policy, they do, do name a lot of these other subgroups, and they will definitely be, help you out a lot too, you know, get that student voice up from the top.
And that's the, and, I'm thankful for this conversation, because I'm not, my goal's not to place a group on top of each other-
Right.
-in a matter of importance, but just recognizing the role that each group plays. So, if we have student voices in place, we need, we need a mechanism to streamline the voice.
Not a group, but we do have, at each traditional high school has a Hispanic heritage class that is offered, so I think-
But we still, yeah.
Yeah, and I think it's at every traditional school but Laney this year, so making sure those teachers have this framework and that language too, well, is important when we think about the language equity component.
Well, can I ask a question? Because, I'm gonna be honest with you, this just blew my mind, and this just made my mind explode, and so, if there is not even a streamline in place for children in all these groups, then you have to have a different adult facilitator. So, a framework has to be established, and I'm not saying that students, things don't, yeah, they are supposed to happen organically, but if we're all working on, it's like, we're always chasing our tail, if there is no process even to even take place where either of these groups have the commonality or the time to talk to one another, because then, how often are they talking to one another even in their own school setting?
And that's why we have this.
And so, but, it can't all fall on Malcolm either.
No, but that's-
I mean, I mean, don't, and so, I'm not trying, because I'm gonna be honest, and I'm gonna say this, and I'm gonna say it now, it's not the save all for Malcolm, but it has to be something to where, yes, Malcolm can develop the framework or whatever else, but he's not necessarily the same, because everybody who's invested, whether it's the children, whether it's the adults in the building, it has to fall where, like you said it has to fall where, like you said earlier, it has to be a shared commitment. And so, but this is mind boggling. Like this is, yes, we want to have equity here, here, here. You got this group, this group, this group, this group. Then you got this group and then everybody's working on the same goals, but.
Because then you could bring your group together and recognize that maybe there's some common ground. Well, we might not need this group because we already have it and just, you know, oh, my goal is to open up conversations, merging maybe, sharing responsibilities. If there's one group that's doing this principle or focusing on this item, then that shouldn't be the focus of another equity group, you know, especially if seated at all schools or all high schools or all middle schools. Uh, and it's very important. Also, I don't want to ignore our pre-K and our elementary. Uh, because when we talk about equity diversity and inclusion, it starts at the most fundamental things of care, kindness, compassion, you know, sympathy, you know, those things lay the foundation and the groundwork to be able to have critical conversations later. You know, and to be honest, I'm really not as much worried about our, our, our younger students. Um, because you see that kindness and care, uh, almost innately. My biggest goal is to making sure the facilitators who are leading this are, are equipped. So my goal for all the student groups and their facilitators, I know we mentioned that there was a student summit in this, over in the summer, but I, it's really important to have a facilitator summit so we can have a facilitator training. Because, just because you are a part of these identities, it doesn't necessarily mean you all come with the tools and the, the resources and the language, um, to really do the work, because sometimes it can be as harmful. Uh, so just be intentional about, I need to know who's in front of our students. You know, we need to be able to know the framework that they're operating from. We need to know what in forms. We need to know that they're not operating with the definition that's not like the one we have on our website. So in this moment, the biggest goal is to have this list so I can start streamlining a point of concept. I can reach out.
Can I, can I make one comment? Oh, I'm sorry.
So no, I'm gonna go.
Yeah, you can go.
Yes.
Just, there's one individual in the community though that's so solid in this arena, and that's Abby at New Hanover High School.
Abby Knowles.
I'll just, you probably already have, I'd make sure to sit down with her and just let her.
Oh yeah, we met. And I, I've been in her classroom, absolutely, yeah. Abby, when she did, uh, when she spoke at the training, uh, we made eye contact and we met twice already, so absolutely.
I, I was just, I was just gonna say perhaps the framework part of it can be part of our strategic plan too. Only because, I mean, you're gonna do it and, and we're gonna do it great, but like if we put it in there, it's, it shows that one, we do the definitions, two, we build a framework. And whatever your plans are, we put it in there. That's something that we, we've done. And that's something that is creating all the space that we need for the work to be done.
And you said, what was the term you did use?
Um, I was just talking about adding it to our strategic plan.
Okay, okay.
Your, your framework and including the facilitator training and stuff like that. Because I just think if it's in our, if it's in our strategic plan, it is definitely plans and they're measurable and there are things we can talk about progress on. Um, we can talk about that later, but I mean, if we're adding definitions, we definitely should be very intentional about the doc, this document, which is our strategic plan, because we're always going back to the strategic plan and that's what we're trying to do. So, um, adding a framework is an excellent idea, because like Kamika said, like she, it's blown her mind, all these things that are happening all out here, but your idea for a framework is, is needed, absolutely needed for, for you and for everyone else that's paying attention.
And that's something that, it will take time to build.
Yeah.
Um, to really parse out all the players, but really quick board member, Ms. Sean.
Yeah, so I was just gonna say, I, I think it, like, like Ms. Walker said, I think it's great to, to like leverage what each other are doing so we're not feeling alone as we're doing the work. Um, and I think that that could help it move, move faster and further ultimately. I will say that I think the formal equity work is great, but like, like for example, we were talking about the unified stuff and I think that program's fantastic and wonderful, but I would expect like equity work to be at every place in an organization. Like if my kid wants to try out for theater, they can try out for theater. If my girls want to go to the math club, like the equity has to be everywhere, not just, not just for the one group. And so, I mean, I know that I'm preaching to the choir here a little bit, but, um, I just don't want people to think that they're alone and, and it's just this framework and it's only that, that area's responsibility, right? I want everybody to have to feel bought into the work.
I was just gonna add comments about, um, I didn't know if you were gonna get to the, the adult groups that are out there also.
Yeah, I'm coming next.
Okay, I'll hold my thoughts.
Ms. Baby?
Real quick, we have three board members here, so, um, I guess my question is, I, well, first I'll make a comment. We're here because of, of the board from the beginning, when it started out back before the pandemic. So I guess to reevaluate and reassess how important this work is that we're trying to do here, what supports are needed in place to make sure you can get this work done? So that we don't sit here for another two or three years, keep starting over and over and over. And yes, we do need that structure, that framework, we need that. But also take a look at what is needed to get this work done in terms of human elements and human support as well. You know, for you, um, and for the district, because that's going to be very important going forward.
Absolutely.
So I was kind of speaking to the board members here.
And I'm going to say that loud and clear, Ms. Baby, budget. I mean, it was a struggle as y'all, if you've been paying attention, how hard the budget was to get through this year. Um, but one of it was to make sure that we did have an equity officer, one, and two, that you were supported with the budget, which it didn't pan out like I had hoped, but there's always time. And I think that if we keep talking about it and figuring out what you need, then, then we can come up with something.
And also taking a look at what other organizations and school systems, what their model looks like for equity.
Yes, I think he's doing that already.
Okay.
And no, and when I tell you, I, part of my school tours has also been meeting with all the, uh, D E I practitioners and I've met Wilmington, Big Twelve, I've, I've been meeting with D E I practitioners because really just picking their brain, you know, from the smaller districts to even your most large, largest district, like, you know, Charlotte Mecklenburg. Um, so absolutely, because the biggest thing about this role, I know, um, the position we are in. You know, I know that my department is you all. I know that my department are the students. You know, I know my department also consists of the parents and other community stakeholders, you know. That's something I know that's really unique to this position. Um, and recognizing all of those needs, I still have to push forward. You know, so just make sure we come to the table to, in the meantime, how can we leverage our resources? You know, to make sure we're not coming up short for our students. Um, any final comments before I move on to faculty and staff groups?
My comment goes in regards to the way that we can support elementary schools, because that's my area. I always feel that, uh, when it's to set up plans and things like that, it goes towards middle school and high school. Because it's easier, it's, you know, they work by departments, they have the afternoon for setups, all these things, but they, we are expecting the students to have a voice when they magically go to middle school, but we are not nurturing that in elementary school. We are not bringing them to be equitable, to talk about equity, to, to develop their different way of thinking, of problem solving, all those skills that can be set up and need to be set up, starting as early as kindergarten. With, I know it's not something we can do right now, but I know it's a conversation that needs to happen once we put our house in order and we know what we have and what we are gonna do with what we have. And then we can start, uh, trickling down all the, the support or the way that our middle schoolers or our high schoolers can be positive role models for our elementary. They can go there and do activities, they can, uh, open ways of communication and telling them how the life of middle school is and high school. You know, there are many ways that we can get them involved without having like a very, uh, major role in the decision-making process, just to nurture them, to boost their confidence and help them develop those possibilities. Because right now we need to change the narrative that our students have, because most of the things are coming from the parents and the parents don't trust the school system. Based on the demographics, many of our families don't trust our school system. So we need to bring our confidence back because they need to talk. They need to say nice things that are happening because other students are empowering them to, to change the narrative.
Absolutely. I agree. And just also just go to one more point, equity programming. And what does equity programming look at, look like at a school? Equity, doing the work of equity is not always an active and engaging program. I was describing to one of the social workers, if I'm not mistaken, at Myrtle Grove, you know, doing, a school's participating in equity work when they have, you know, affinity groups. And I was describing to what one of the affinity groups were. Um, at my old institution, I ran, uh, Black Boys Affinity and I ran Gender Sexuality and Alliance affinity. Uh, but there was also a Quiet Affinity. There was also, um, uh, Exploring Whiteness affinity. You know, it's just offering spaces. So what I would do, you know, I was describing, there's some people who are willing and prepared to lead the charge and do the work. There are some people who are not confident and who, who care, who are passionate, but they don't feel well versed or prepared to do that type of work. But you can still do equity work and what that looks like is your room can be a safe space. You know, I'm not as comfortable as leading a, a group on GSA. However, I would love to offer my space to my planet here for any GSA students, no questions asked, want to come and just chill out and have some downtime. That's equity work and that should be accounted for, because we can't expect everyone to jump in and be, you know, warriors like we are. You know, we're the front line for a reason, but that doesn't discount, you know, the desires for other people to see this work come, um, into fruition. So be sure that, you know, we educate schools of what all equity work looks like. Equity work, you know, you know how we're working to even just calming rooms. I've seen equity work, there was a, one school has a, a Tai Chi, a gentleman that comes in and teaches Tai Chi. And I just walked past him accidentally in the hallway and we had a conversation and he talks about the impact of his work. His work, you know, really is really the social emotional development, which is still part of equity work. So there are a lot of schools that are doing equity work. And I think if we can tease it out and acknowledge it, we want to increase, increase buy-in, because ultimately that's what it boils down to and acknowledge the work that you've already done and let's just continue to build upon it. And just to, to your point of, you know, especially in our primary pre-K, it would be a load for the teachers, because that's who they are with twenty-four seven, I mean, throughout the whole entire school day. And that's just that continued to push of that social emotional line, you know, because no, I don't want them to have critical conversations. I don't want them, there are a lot of barriers and I feel like, I feel like there's some benchmarking in their understanding that needs to be established for us and we can say, hey, I want to leave this type of affinity group at this lower level. But I do think if we really push that, like I mentioned earlier, that, you know, being this empathy, kindness, compassionate, that piece, that's equity diversity and inclusion, you know, and just doing it from a standpoint to where you're just telling them to be good humans, being kind humans, you know, those are things that really set the foundation, because doing so, our kids will be prepared. You know, um, they won't be so shell shocked when the first time, you know, they're put in a position to where they have to talk about their differences, because they've done it before, it just, it felt different. Um, I can go for hours on that and I know we're crushed for time. Please keep me, we're good?
We're good.
Okay, so faculty and staff, student groups and organizations.
Okay, I, I, I prepared this list for the students at Student Voice. That's why a lot of these things are coming off the top of my head. But, um, at schools, um, to speak to the, um, the elementary level, they're, the counselors push into the classrooms. And so they talk about, you know, character education as part of their curriculum and then the teachers weave that in. So that is one way that our, our youngest, you know, children are brought in, um, with that. So staff also are part of the work, the equity work group, um, that was established before the EDI committee. So that to me is almost like a little bit of a, not a conflict, but it's again, it's a parallel path of work. And I know a lot of you guys are on that committee too, so we're, we're doing double duty. Um, school improvement teams are where you engage, you know, your faculty and your staff on looking at different kinds of things. And even in the, um, in the, in the PLCs, the different, you know, groups around the schools, different departments talk about, you know, like how do we get more kids in our AP classes? You know, how do we get more kids into, more girls into math, you know, or, so that's happening at our PLCs, our school improvement teams, the, the big community, the big work ethic, the work group. And there was one other one that I couldn't, that I am, I'm, I'm forgetting, but I can, um, I can share my list with you.
I'd say.
Go ahead.
Emerging leaders too.
Yes.
That's the, um, they're a group of teacher leaders led by Elizabeth Phelps and I think Peter Hunt now.
Can I just add in AIG as well? Because I know they presented to us at the board probably a few months ago about how they wanted to look, uh, reassess what AIG does and how they identify students. Um, I can't think of her name, do you know?
And that's Maureen Meehan.
Meehan, yeah.
Yeah, and she's on the third floor with us too.
The, and you know, the, the, the curriculum committee, you know, looks at that. The, um, the Advisory Council for Exceptional Children look at that. And if you look at any one of our, um, our committees.
Advisory Committee for Exceptional Children.
There's a lot of those, um.
Advisory Committee for Exceptional Students.
Exceptional Students, yes.
Yep, you got it.
And so, um, it's, it's not called ACES, even though that would be a nice acronym, but it's, it, we don't call it ACES anymore because ACES is reserved for, oh, and we have the Resiliency Task Force, um, that, you know, communities and schools leads and has members of, um, the, the school district that are a part of that.
I think Malcolm met some of them at the Equity Summit.
So actually, yeah, I met, I went to Wilson today and I was able to meet with them to, you know. So the Resiliency Task Force, is that encompassing CIS link in?
CIS is, is, is the overall managing group of that and then, and they, they manage, you know, the, the membership of that.
Okay.
Um, and Communities in Schools is one of those adult-based, um, programs where we have, um, school, student support specialists in each school that work hand in hand with our counselors and our student, um, and our social workers to get those kids. And so they are usually working with, um, kids that fall into the marginalized category. And, you know, Sean is on that, um, that board, I'm on that board. So that's just another avenue of, um, input.
I don't know what's going on with the Title IX Committee.
Oh, I, I was getting that. That was the one I couldn't remember. The, so Title IX, um, is a committee that we have and we had talked at one point about, you know, merging our groups, but we're waiting, we were waiting for you to come. But that is another, you know, group that is looking at equity, um, mainly from the point of, um, the girls in sports and girls in academics and basically more of the Title IX perspective and, um, and the civil rights perspective with that. But that is another, um, group that is working. And Jorrell does do the training of all of those different facilitators at the schools.
And I would say to that, we just did a, a survey and I, I don't know where you can get access to that, or maybe Josh has access to that. We just did a climate survey, um, gosh.
Fall of last year.
Fall of last year.
November, actually.
And I would recommend looking at the results of that, because I feel like we haven't had the opportunity to do a follow-up to it. Um, it definitely told us a lot about what's going on in our middle and high schools right now, um, especially if it contains LGBTQ plus children and what they're going through. And I hope we get to revisit that soon, because I think that's something we should be working on as well.
So.
That was about harassment and bullying, um, of.
Sexual harassment.
Um, Gen Ed students and, um, and then for harassment based on sexual misconduct.
So two things I heard was the facilitator training already exists, because Jorrell has already done it.
Yes.
And this.
For Title IX only.
For Title IX only, but the training exists.
Yes.
And the second item, the bullying harassment for.
Um, survey, yeah, that, that, I'll send, Jorrell will give you a copy of that.
So what I, what I want to do is also in this conversation, just talk about some trainings that were given to some of these groups, so that when we do a, a facilitator summit and some, we can consolidate a lot of those things and hit everyone, you know.
And, um, members of the, um, of Jorrell's GSA Alliance teachers, they all took Safe Zone over the summer.
Okay.
And Karas, could, I don't know if you, Dr. Smith, the other Dr. Smith has spoken to him about the training that she did before.
I showed him the website of all the trainings that, um, district staff have undergone and the book studies as well, yeah.
All right, so for faculty, is there anyone, anything missing? Cool, this is a organic, I mean, a living, breathing list, so please just feel free to email me any additional groups. So what I'm going to do was actually going to slide right into our next one, EDI Parent Work Group. Um, before we hop into that, any parent or community equity groups?
And I just got a text that Abby and Brian have consistently done facilitator trainings for faculty, working with, um, equity groups as well. Thank you, Dr. Casey Smith, who's watching right now and texted.
Thank you, Dr. Casey.
The, um, there's a new PTA, um, Special Education PTA. They call it SEPTA, S E P T A. And that is, um, they're a member of the New Hanover County Council of PTAs with that.
Awesome.
And I wanted to mention PTAs is also an adult group and a kid group, because at high school and some of the middle schools, it's actually a PTSA, so they do have a student component to that. So that would be a, a parent org, and you're, you're a member of the SEPTA. I'm a member. I think Stephanie's a member, Ms. Walker's a member of, of that. So that's, that's another community group that, um, that we, that I know of. There, I'm sure there's many more.
There's gotta be more, yeah.
But that's one that's really engages directly with, with the school.
And then building off of that, the New Hanover County Council of PTAs are a great resource and advocate group that we've worked with and helped us out a lot.
Perfect, thank you all.
Doesn't Maria have like a, Maria Black?
Maria Black.
Doesn't she have like a, um, some sort of, um, alliance that she has for?
Do they call them parent liaison? Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, I guess parent liaison or people doing that work, but I was thinking of like, like the, um, El Cuerpo group that, that Caleb works with, or maybe I'm just.
But that's one of the community-based, like.
Yes, like community-based.
Like a church. Like a church, um, group that they support their Hispanic families.
The Latino Alliance.
Yeah, Latino Alliance.
And if we start to look at the parent liaison groups as part of the equity groups, that way also bridges that gap of communication as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of people.
And I think Maria has like a staff of about six.
Yes.
I'm just gonna write Maria Black.
Yeah, write Maria Black.
They're parent community.
Exclamation point, yeah.
All right, Caress, any more parent, family, community work groups? Um, there's one work group.
Sorry, I just remembered.
I don't.
The NAACP Parent Council.
Okay.
They do a lot of advocacy, um, when it comes to schools and.
Now, how familiar are we with?
Is that still George? Is that still George Velasquez? Yeah.
Did they say love our children?
Love Our Children, they're community-based. They help, um, I think work with the board to change that policy for suspending.
Right, but then you mentioned the Parents Council. Isn't that, wouldn't that sort of fall within parents or you rather put it in community-based?
Well, no, I'm, I'm listening both of them together.
Okay, Love Our Children, I guess, is one that has established itself. They come to board meetings regularly. I mean, you can write it down, I think, um.
Probably goes in place, but probably.
And then you got Latino Alliance too.
Now, are you guys familiar with the Grandparents Network?
We, the, um, we, we.
We are, we do some work with them. Um, and members on my staff work hand in hand with them to kind of push into our schools. And, um, I know, um, one of my staff members has been working with a grant that they are pursuing right now as well.
So, uh, and that's, and I, I really do want to just stress upon them, just know and recognize just the demographic that we serve and who's caring for our children. Um, being super attentive with our grandparents and getting that information to them without expectation of them coming to us.
And that contact, do you have that contact information or you already have someone that's contacted?
Well, the only reason I said that because I grew up in grandparents. I used to go to grandparents and I just know how vital it was, you know, how out of the loop grandparents can be. So I don't have the current point of contact, but if I can get that from you.
I bet Bernice does, either you or Bernice would have the grandparents.
I have, we just did a caregivers conference at our school.
Perfect, I'm gonna come to you for that, um.
And I don't want to rush you, but you got like three minutes before to get through the next things, if you want a lifetime for your Q and A.
Beautiful, all right. Um, any more parent or community work groups?
Voyage.
Voyage.
Just remember Voyage. And Sora is, Sora's Eagles.
Soren is Eagles and you met Ms. Kim.
You got a meeting on the books, yep.
To be up with, get with her.
I think Community Conversations is one too.
Yeah, that's Rebecca's, right?
Rebecca Trammell, I think you met Rebecca already.
Champions for Compassion is the name of her nonprofit.
And what was her name?
Rebecca Trammell. I think you met her at, um, last week's board meeting and also at the Bidim Boat.
Yep.
It's blowwork.
The NAACP Parent Council is led by George Velasit and it, it's V-L-A-S-I-T.
I can send you that information.
All right, so, uh, I do want to move on to, so the parent work group, um, that's one work group that, um, I received information for that. They are looking to see if that's something that we're gonna still do. Um, and I can tell by some nods that it's still, we recognize that's still a need. Um, so what I want to do next for that is, we do have to, I, uh, you got me almost once saying your name wrong. Caress, uh, sent me a list of all the parents and family members who signed up and were interested and like they submitted application. Uh, but I do believe since it's almost like a new cycle that we should send out a new one. With the disclaimer, if you've already applied, we still have your application. That way we don't get a lot of duplicates. Uh, once we send that out, then just talk about creating a selection committee, uh, to get that moving forward.
So, um, Caress, when, when, when we send this out, this, this is something that the, the board is also working on as part of our policy for board committees, is that we have a, um, a unified application across all of ours. I know that this committee, um, was one of the first to develop a really good application. So that the other board committees were looking to copy. So that we have a uniform application of parents and community members. So is that what you've sent out?
Yeah, there was an, um, application that, with a list of questions, questionnaires and, um, identified, not like identifying factors, but asked for information about parents and what they represent, what demographic they would represent.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think we, um, we have about a hundred applicants thus far. So if we open it up, again, especially considering this is a new school year and we have new kindergarten families and new families who've moved to the area who may want to participate, that would be good to kind of give them a chance to.
And that's just for this committee?
It, I don't think it's a committee, it's a parent work group. So it would be outside of, I don't know what its actual relation with the EDI committee would be. So would it have board representation? Would it need to be announced like a board meeting or would it just be, um, Malcolm meeting with a parent work group on EDI?
Well, I know Dr. Smith's original framework was to add a business component, a parent, and I think this is where we were. We weren't quite there at the commu, the business part, component, but a parent group was part of what she had put on there as far as what we wanted to expand upon for EDI. But I don't, I mean, she might be the perfect person to ask about, you know? I hate to say it, like, cause I, I know that we didn't quite get to that work yet. And then we took applications, but we weren't quite there. So it might be what your vision is for that work.
I mean, personally, I think that, I, I, I think that the ultimate vision was great, but it was also complex. And I think moving forward, we, we would want to move forward as quickly as possible with both the student component, with Student Voice, which I know we have been, but both, and then the parent component because of what Lena just said. We want, we want people in and helping us do the work, to your point.
All right, um, just to make sure we do streamline this, I would think if it's okay with the rest of the committee, I suggest we make a, set a deadline for when we are opening this application back up, how long it'll be open, when we are having our selection committee and when we intend to invite these parents to like the first meeting. That way with deadlines set, it, it gets moving and it stays on track and it, it streamlines.
So what are your thoughts Malcolm on, on a timeline?
And are all these groups that were just listed, are all those gonna be points of contact to find parents who will be interested in serving with the EDI group, parent group?
And, and, and principals, you know, should have a good idea. And I know that, um, David at Laney, when I asked him, how do you pick your people? And he said, well, just kids that I, that I see, you know, that, um, kids that I know that are across the board. So I think that our teachers and our principals have to.
Caress could probably answer how the application was put out there and who it was broadcast to, how did you originally?
So it went to all families via school messenger. Um, it was posted on the website and I believe it was also added to our social media accounts. So every, um, family in the district with their communication in Power School, correct, got that application.
And what was the typical window for them to get application submitted?
I believe we gave them a month.
A month, so what we can do since we.
I don't think we maybe need a month.
Right, so if we're coming back into our EDI committee meetings, meeting monthly, with our next meeting being on October 3rd, could we push for October 3rd to be the day that we release the application? Or did we want to release it on the 26th? And I do our selection committee on the 3rd, wants to just get a pulse of resume, applications coming in? And have closing of applications be on the 10th? So it opens on 26th and closes on the 10th.
I like opening on the 26th and closing on the 10th.
Okay.
I like that too. I think that we have a, a healthy applicant pool. It would give the new folks time and then it would be moving, you know, it'd be moving.
Perfect.
Yep.
Perfect, all right.
So with this, we are saying that we are inviting only families that are in our school system, not families that don't belong to the school system, but it's open to anybody who wants to.
For school system.
School system families.
Yeah.
So that was the 26th, September 26th, release, selection committee on October 3rd? And then close in deadline, October 10th?
Yes.
Okay. And then depending upon who's on the selection committee, you'll reach out to them and establish dates for the selection committee meeting?
So what I'm looking for, if we can have the selection committee finalize on, in the 3rd, uh, that we have the, the rest of that week.
Okay.
To do the work.
We also too, um, Ms. Walker will have the opportunity to give a committee report at our October board meeting, which is October the 4th. That, um, if you, um, and you and she can work on, um, and, and Mr. McManus, cause she's part of the committee too. The, maybe you guys can work on a, a brief, you know, two, three minute report, um, update on what's going on. And if we, if there's any more dates that you have to put out there, that could be like our, our one last push for people in a public forum.
Now, does those dates work for everybody, we're good? Reasonable, sufficient amount of time for parents to get it on the website, get it through Messenger and solicit responses from the applications?
My only question. You mentioned grandparents group. And so like when we sit down, we say, okay, we're gonna send it through all these different platforms. Just some of your vulnerable population that probably needs a voice or someone to represent their voice. That's the only thing I was asking, that's the reason I was asking. Is this gonna be sent out to all those different groups you mentioned? Just to make sure if it's an application process, you know, some people are on it.
So this is almost like reaching out to the, maybe, uh, Ms. Donna for social work? That will have maybe a list of.
Yeah.
Of, I'm not sure if we have access to student demographic that would give us that detail to know? Or I'm not sure there's a pipeline that already has that information?
We can definitely share, like, cause we specifically, when there's information that comes that we want to get to our non-English speaking families and our Latin population, we specifically send that information to the Latino Alliance. And they make sure that information gets disseminated to the strongest areas where they, they get their news. So they'll post it to their, to their group and share it with their groups. And then they'll also post it on those social media groups where there were higher percentages of their populations act. And we can make sure we do that for all of ours and reach out, um, to, um, those families as well. I know I post a lot of stuff that comes from the district through Community Conversations.
You might also want to use, I know most of our Title I schools have parent liaisons and that are different than the, you know, Hispanic speaking, you know, parent liaisons. But they're the ones, that's their job is to reach out to the different families, you know, um, in the school. So that might be another, you know, way to get the information out to the people that you're talking with. Like the, the grandmamas that sit on their porch and, you know, everybody knows who they are. So someone, but they don't have a computer, you know, so they may not ever get that.
Or they just might not be technologically savvy.
Yeah.
So it's not even about not having a computer, but not even knowing how to access it. Or just use the apps or whatever else on it.
Okay.
And we can send a direct invitation to all the principals since we are having open houses in this coming weeks.
Nice, okay.
We can, that, you know, a lot of parents are coming to the school. So we can send a flyer or something with a QR code, something that is easy to access. Give them some, a quick access if they want to participate. And they, and this is the application, submit the application.
Okay, thank you. All right.
And the application will be update, I mean, will be open again on what day?
September 26th, Monday. Selection committee on October 3rd. Application closes.
October 10th.
10th, so I apologize. So we would do the selection the 11th through the 14th. When the application's closed.
So we creating a committee for the selection process or we're gonna do it in a regular meeting?
I think you said a selection committee.
A selection committee.
3rd is the Monday, the next meeting, which is the 3rd of October, EDI, next EDI.
Okay.
So we back to monthly.
Well, that is the next question, is month, I think for now, monthly is probably best.
Monthly, yeah.
During this time.
And monthly is, I'm sorry, for my benefit, um, to make sure I, I get as fully immersed as, to working with you guys as possible because I, you guys are my department. Uh, so yeah, I want to see you guys as much as possible. Um, so moving forward, all right, we, not having a Q and A is fine. Um, I know we, we're really cut for time, I think we have six minutes?
Yes.
Okay, so the Crowe Book Study, uh, a few months ago, uh, before I came into the role, um, UNCW, the community, the Arts Engagement Department and the Communications Department, um, they have an EDA grant for the Come Visit, the author is Barbara Wright, she's the author of the book Crowe. Um, based on some input from school surveys, this was a book that was selected, um, to be used. Um, and we have been get, we haven't received the get, we've been offered, uh, we haven't accepted, just offered 250 copies of this book. Um, the conversation then becomes, it's a historical fiction about 1898. That's written by a white woman who was writing from the perspective of a Wilmingtonan black boy. All right, um, so having a historical lens of someone from outside of a culture, speaking from the perspective of someone who was deeply impacted by the culture, um, I don't want to just rush and say, okay, let's bring this book in without us first, the EDI committee doing the book study. Um, it is important for us to know what's in this book before we say, okay. Um, just because it has 1898 on it, we can't welcome everything, you know? Especially as educators, we have to do our due diligence. And if this is something we want to have, then we'll do a book study. If there's not, if we're not interested, um, and want to continue with our, our, our current efforts, um, I am open to having that discussion as well. But if we have any strong voices or opinions about having this book brought into the school system, um, I would love to do a book study. Because what we are looking to do, um, UNCW is going to host, our goal is to have UNCW to host the bit. Um, and if our parents or students want to go after school, that information will be provided for them to do that. Um, and we will have class copies that will float between media libraries. Um, so that's the only, that's our partnership. If you take that, those 250 books, break them up in class sets and have them shift in between the media libraries. So that's something that we really feel strongly about, um, we will have to do a book study. Um, so any thoughts, opinions or?
My first question is, have you had a chance to read it yet?
I haven't even received a copy yet.
Okay.
I haven't received a copy yet either, um, but just looking at some of the language that was used in reviewing how the author researched the book and the material she's using to research, she used to research the book. Uh, I am not as inclined to have an interest in reading it. Not saying like, I'm not saying anything, and have to understand, I think the book was written also in 2012, 2013. So kind of from a time where the, there wasn't this, um, as big a push of our stories being told but from the, through white women's lens. I'm not inclined to, um, push gay for the book. And that's also with the knowledge of knowing that she used a white boy from Wilmington's 1900th Journal as her research to, to utilize and write this black boy's perspective.
And teachers have used the book already.
Yeah.
So there have been teachers in middle schools that have used the book and have taken students on the tour, um, related, using that book as the guide. Um, and so we know that Kate Philarison is a fictional story. And so all of, but those fictional stories are what brought to light the truth behind what is now the story. So it can be a teachable moment, it has been, well, it is, it can be, but it has been already. So people have used the book as a teachable moment to talk about 1898, whether in the fourth grade or eighth grade classrooms. And so you do have more relevant books now.
Yeah.
But it's just, um, for the sake of, you know, being said, how can it be an added component? You don't have to necessarily read the whole book or you don't have to necessarily get 250, you know, like 250 books.
And speaking from just the educator's standpoint?
I've read it in one of my classes, but I haven't read it in a while. So I can't, and I don't have recall, there's too much stuff going on in my brain, so. But, but yeah, I've read it. And it is from the perspective of, uh, well, and this is the thing, I didn't even research the author. I just read the book. And it, it gave a lot of, um, insight. And so you hear the points or the points of contact, but you know, like of individual locations in Wilmington and things like that. But, so when you start looking at it, it has been used already in New Henry County. And this is when I was with the district. So this is not as a lab school participant, this is as a district educator in New Henry County schools that. This is as a district educator in New Hennepin County schools that this book was being used.
And this is, and that's one that's new information for me. And that really just takes, you know, gives me more insight to take back, uh, for conversation, um, to know whether or not if, if it's something that's already implemented, you know, is this something that we're looking to take on against, this is already present? Um, because it's really, I'm really big on due diligence, um, doing our, doing our background, doing our research. And for some students, if we do take it on, this would be their first, you know, scholastic introduction into eighteen ninety-eight, and I would rather it not be built on a historical fiction.
Yeah.
You know, I would much prefer it to be built on, you know, found, like, true fact. And then absolutely, I welcome all stories that offer our different, uh, points of view, but I don't want one person's perspective be a student's foundation, you know? So that's just the biggest thing for me. So there's an alternative to that. That's what I'm more interested in. But saying yes to this and knowing that it's gonna be some students' first put in contact when we talk about this, I'm not comfortable pushing it forward.
Brian, did you have any experience reading that or anything to do with that?
I haven't read it, but I do believe that it's been used by, by teachers for, for a while, but that's what can we can speak to, yeah.
I, I don't mean this in any way of disrespect, but, um, well, you brought this to us, so where's it coming from?
So this was, um, this was a, a opportunity that was given to us straight in, like, New Hennepin County schools, to, to admin. Um, this was, they reached out, if I'm not mistaken, they reached out to the Communication Outreach Department.
So it was, it came to the curriculum and instruction team. And then they, um, they had received the grant, or been offered the grant. And then when we were looking at the possibility, the author would be coming to town as well, and they were looking at having her visit the schools and the schools getting in front of her. So then my division was, kind of looked into the book and looked into, uh, did a little research on it. And then we felt that it would be better if, um, someone with more of a equitable lens could follow through. And then I think it was bounced to Malcolm, who was, who's brought us here, here, for a discussion on what we would like to see regarding how this moves forward.
So is it upon this committee somewhat to, um, review the book first?
So if there's overwhelmingly like, "Yes, let's push forward," then I would love to do a book study. Um, if not, I also wanna use this, um, just to gain understanding, because I didn't have the insight that it's already been used. So just gaining that perspective, so that way when we do go back to our, to the table and have these conversations, we can make a decision, because even if we don't do the book committee, maybe it's just a solid no. I can make that, you know, that decision with informed, um, frame of, frame of reference. So, you know, so if you have read it, haven't read it, you know, this is, instead of voting to do the book study, you know, to share insights or, you know, share experiences, because a lot of books like that, I do, especially in this age, in this climate, um, and knowing when it will take place, also plays a major factor. Um, because we're not looking to have, if we were to take a book, we wouldn't receive the books until November third. Um, and what I would love for us to do is really be able just to focus, um, yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, go ahead.
No, I, I tend to agree. It's a very thoughtful discussion we're having, especially in light of the fact that we are talking more about eighteen ninety-eight and adding it to our curriculum. If we wanna be, I guess, again, I'll use the word intentional about how we teach these things, perhaps the perspective that Caress brought up in you as well, um, it might be a good idea to not, just take the offer. I know it sounds like a very good author, uh, offer is two-hundred-and-fifty books, and it's a chance to do the study, but I don't know anything about the book. I can't sit here and say I support it, but I think I'm listening to what I'm hearing and I'm, from you guys. And I think, um, I think maybe we should, I mean, do we wanna close the book on this now, so to speak? Or do we wanna, did anybody wanted to read about it first, or do you guys wanna make a decision now?
Well, I was just gonna ask a question, and so this is not, I'm not promoting the book or whatever. But when do we allow time for critical thinking, or the conversations to take place in the classroom? So you brought up a good point. When we are looking at fictional context, how does this compare to what really happened? And so, you know, like, one of the things that we need to also develop as educators or as adults with our children is critical thinking skills. And so we have the children evaluate those things. And so maybe it can be, I'm not saying that this is the right book or whatever else. Maybe we do need to review the material that we're looking at, or just to see. But we compare it to the non-fictional text, and then we have those, that information to where the curriculum and the Instruction Department can come up with a lesson plan for teachers to teach across the board with this book, or, and the supplemental text to be handed over with it. And so, but to where, okay, well, this is, and you get the perspective. But this book was written by a white woman based on the timeline of blah, 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 blah. Do you think that this is fair, or do you think that it's? And they have those discussions within that classroom.
And query-based learning.
And, and that's how we handle it. And so, but that's one of the, another aspect that you can look at it, but they're also getting into that history. Not only eighteen ninety-eight, but everything that was going around during that time. When you talk about the Fusion Party, when you talk about all of those different aspects of why it didn't work, or what happened. I mean, but you can dig deeper, but you're giving it to them in small doses, maybe in that fictional way they can understand, but also adding that non-fictional component to it, to where they can see the alignment or the disalignment.
If there was a paired text or a paired curriculum.
And then I know our curricul- instruction and curriculum, when the ELA, when they reached out, um, talked to us, they said they would also like to, but since it is a historical, um, fiction, they would like to compare it and work with it alongside of fictional writings and fictional texts. So there is that point of view. Casey just texted said, she echoed the same thing you said, Cami, 'cause like they're still using it in ELA. So that's Casey over at Merrill Grove who's saying this. So, I mean, that kind of changes my perspective if it's already in the classes, if it's already...
We do, instead of getting a final answer now, this is more so just weird fact-finding now. We just shift this to more fact-finding, and that way we can just take it, take it back.
Can we get some advanced copies, just to be able to look?
So I can reach out, and we can do that. Uh, and I just send an email, um, to you guys if you want, like a copy, we can, we can get you guys a copy. Um, and just go ahead. I wanna wrap that up, so we're not making a decision on that, fact-finding, um, because there are individuals like Mr. Travis.
Matthews.
Travis Matthews, I, I still would love his input, too, just from that social studies perspective. Um, so thank you, guys. Um, I know we are cut for time, and I apologize for these seven minutes. So I do wanna just go and take a, take a moment now, just to reiterate. Um, I received a list of all your student and faculty and parent and community work groups. I was informed about training that took place, all right? I just wanna reiterate, I'm not saying training that took place were bad or ineffective. Those are good trainings, but if they're already in place, I wanna be able to make sure all, every, all facilitated and get them, get those trainings versus me trying to come up with a new training, all right? So for my people in person and hybrid or online, just want you guys to know, um, I do believe all the trains we have are good, but I want to, how do we bring them to a point to where we can streamline our EDI work, and all persons who are involved with our scholars can get that training? Um, so just expanding the reach and access to those trainers. So with that being said, I would love to call this meeting to a close, and I think you guys are really showing up and, uh, supporting us in this effort.
Thanks, Malcolm. Walk them.
Brian, you started a little nice.